Kirby, stop it. I just was trying to take the pressure off Jim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I will call this regular school board meeting of independent school district number 544 to order. And we will begin with establishing the quorum. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Late but here. Matthew Limpke.
Here.
Ms. Hermes present, Stephen Vigesson.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. I would look for a motion to approve our agenda this morning.
So moved.
A second?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say nay. We have one resolution, and that is to thank the DASSA and Co-op Credit Union for their donation to be used for lunches or school supplies for the elementary school. Thank you very much for that. I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
A second there.
Any discussion on this?
I'll just make a quick, you know, you might wonder why the DASSA and Minnesota Co-op Credit Union would donate to our school lunch program. And the reason is, is that the Otter Tail Power Credit Union has recently joined hands with the DASSA Credit Union. And so they kept their office downtown, and it's just a cost-saving measure. So DASSA is down by Candy, Minnesota, but that's the reason they did it. They're called DASSA Credit Union, but it's still half DASSA, half Otter Tail Power. So it's basically the Otter Tail Power Credit Union portion, and that's why they did this.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments? Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole. Yes. Matthew Limpke.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigesson?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. And next, we will move on to our reports from the principals. And we begin with Scott Colbeck, elementary principal at Adams and McKinley. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see all of you again. Hope you had a good summer. You know, as I was driving here this morning, I was doing some math and thinking about how I'm entering my 22nd year in the school district. Then I also thought, this is the first year in the past 20 years where I haven't had one of my own children in the school district. So kind of an interesting new feeling. But I appreciate the 20 years that my children had in the school district and feel really good about their experience. People are always interested, I think, to know kind of where our numbers are at this time of the year. So just wanted to kind of review where we're at in K and 1 and 2 with our numbers. Maybe a week and a half to two weeks ago, I made a decision to slide one of our first grade teachers to kindergarten. Just seeing what our kindergarten numbers were doing and then knowing that we would still be okay in first grade. So Katie Lilis, who was a teacher at Cleveland last year and who thought she was going to be a first grade teacher at Adams this year, is now a kindergarten teacher at McKinley. She's our 10th section. And we are sitting at 200 kindergarten students right now, so 20 per class. Of those 200, though, we should note that 185 are new to the district. 15 of them are going to be doing kindergarten with us again. Which is not abnormal for us, a little bit. I mean, 9%, 9% of last year's kindergarten classes doing kindergarten again with us this year. It's usually about 5% in past years. If you look at the ages of those 15 kids, I think 14 of them have summer birthdays, which means they turn five in August or July or June. So we just think, for many of them, it's going to be better that they're 18 when they graduate and then turn 19 in the summer versus being 17 when they graduate, turning 18. We have four new teachers to McKinley this year, two of them not new to the district. I mentioned one of them already, Katie. And then we have our music teacher, Michelle Danielson. That's a very well-known name around here. So Michelle was teaching music at Cleveland last year. I was just looking for a new experience, so we're happy to welcome her to McKinley. We're also welcoming a new ASL teacher, Courtney Anderson, and a new special ed teacher, Rebecca Lynn. So those would be the four: Katie and Michelle, Courtney and Rebecca. Okay, moving on to first grade. First grade, we're sitting at eight sections, so we were thinking we'd enter the year with nine. We're at eight. We're sitting at 173 students right now. That would put our teachers with either 21 or 22 kids in first grade. And like the years past, we have two first grade teachers at McKinley and then six at Adams School. Moving into second grade, that's a little bit of a smaller class. We have seven sections or seven teachers in second grade at Adams School. 160 students. So we have six of our teachers right now ready to go with 23 kids and one with 22. Of course, these numbers that I'm sharing with you, they change almost daily between now and I would say the end of the second week of school. Back to school letters. It's always an exciting time for families. They're always kind of itching to know who is my child's teacher this year. So our back-to-school letters, our goal is to get them mailed on Wednesday of this week, so that families will have them hopefully Thursday or Friday in time to plan for their open house evening, the night of Wednesday, August 31st. Wednesday, August 31st, the open house for the elementary schools is from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Last week, we had a really good math training. Our district has adopted a new math curriculum. It's called Bridges. And so our teachers came in for two days of training, or 12 hours total. And I think our teachers are excited to be moving into a new math curriculum. There's a lot of learning to go with that, a lot of planning. What we've been told is that first year is, first year's a lot of work. When we've talked to other teachers who have been through the math Bridges training and then implemented the Bridges math. I want to tell you about a fun experience I had last week, and I know some of you have maybe had that experience this morning, listening to a few of you talk. I stopped by the bus company last week. I needed to drop off to them the names of all of our first graders who would be attending McKinley School. They're always anxious to get those names of the first graders attending McKinley because their bus information and bus routes differ a little bit. But when I was there, Mike Clark noticed that I was admiring one of his new buses in his bus garage. And I actually, I actually reached out and kind of touched the butts. And when I walked into the office, the first words I heard were, "Keep your hands off my bus." Apparently, there's a window that they could look through, and he said, "Hey, do you want to go for a ride in the new bus?" And so you might be thinking, what's so interesting about a new yellow school bus? Well, this one is battery-operated, not many of its kind in Minnesota. So not only did he give me a little ride in it, he said, "Would you like to drive it?" And I said, "How much did this cost?" I said, "If you don't mind me asking," and he said, "No, it's fine." $350,000. I said, "Oh, okay. I'll drive it." But we stayed in the parking lot, and it was an interesting experience. I said, "Hey, you know, 350K, what's a yellow school bus that runs on fuel, gasoline? $100,000." "So how about that coach bus over there, you know, the ones that people charter?" $550,000. "Okay." So just kind of interesting, interesting information and numbers to know. But maybe more exciting than the new, the new school bus is every single bus in their fleet has been outfitted with new cameras. And more cameras and better angles. And so they brought me into their office and pulled up the cameras on one of the buses, and it's like night and day. So I think that will be very helpful to building administrators if we ever need to help solve something that may or may not have happened on a bus. So some good things, good things there. Along the lines of some new technology, for the first time ever, our classrooms at the elementary schools have brand-new Promethean boards. We've never had the interactive boards like that. So these boards replace the projection unit that was hanging from the ceiling, and they also replace the screens that are in the classroom. So if you walk into one of our classrooms now, you won't see a projection unit nor a screen, but you'll see new interactive whiteboards. So new interactive Promethean boards. So our teachers will have some training, lots of training this year going into the school year. But there'll be some training during workshop week for those boards. And then as far as staffing, I have two support staff positions yet to fill. But I have a great lead on somebody. I got a fun text last night. I've gotten kind of excited about today reaching out to this person. So almost, almost fully staffed, not quite, but we're getting there. And then lastly, I just wanted to publicly thank our custodial crew, our grounds crew. I think our buildings are looking great. The outside around them is looking really nice. And then also to our secretaries, who've had a really busy and really productive first week back last week. So our secretaries at the elementary schools have been with us now for a week. And we'll have a second busy week here getting ready for workshop week, a week from today. With that, I can entertain any questions from the board.
The Bridges curriculum, what grades is that for?
K-5. I think it went up through 5.
Yep.
Did I have that right?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
A few of us board members got to ride the school bus today, too, and superintendent got to drive it. And I think just one thing I wanted to add on the cameras, instead of using SD cards, they can actually download through Wi-Fi. So they don't have to go out to the physical bus to get the video, so it's much easier and much quicker to get video and if they need it.
Yeah, thank you for that, Kirby. In fact, Craig, Craig at the bus company shared that with me. So oftentimes, when I'll call him, I know that it'll mean, hey, Craig, I need you to give me some video from such and such bus at such and such time. And then that means he has to get up and go out into the oftentimes very cold bus garage and pull a chip, so won't need to do that anymore. I did learn about tail swing, driving along buses like that, tail swing. So if you're driving along a building, you can't be too close to the building and think you're going to turn right, or your back left tail will. That didn't happen to me. But I learned about tail swing. I had enough knowledge to even ask about tail swing before I started driving a bus.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Colbeck. Next, we'll hear from Principal Run, elementary principal at Cleveland. Good morning.
Good morning. As Mr. Colbeck talked about our partnership with Otter Tail Coaches, another really great partnership we have in our community is with the public library. And I had the opportunity to visit a little bit with Gail Headstrom the other day and just ask some questions about the summer reading program. And she shared that there were 1,501 people that participated in the summer reading program this summer. It spans adults through children, but the majority of the participants were students and younger children, so that was really exciting. And the library has an additional program that they call extra reading time at the library. They use the, what's it called? Read Live software, which we are familiar with using through our school district as an intervention measure. And they hire five tutors to implement that during the course of the summer. And one of those tutors was Deb Striggy, who's one of our 4th grade teachers at Prairie Science Class. And the other people were reading specialists from neighboring school districts. So they really find some good quality people to carry that out with students to help build those reading skills and maintain fluency during the course of the summer. They had 76 students participate in that. We might, you may remember last spring, we shared, Gail Headstrom reaches out to Mr. Colbeck and I each spring for a list of students who have been participating in intervention programs during the school year. And then those families receive invitations or letters about this program. And so it's really great to see that number of students get to participate during the summer. And then this program, the Read Live, is a subscription. So even when they're done participating during the summertime, they still have access to this, the Read Live software at their home. So it's something that they can continue to use, and many do. And then, of course, the youngest learners get to enjoy storytime, so they cover all of the ages of people in our community. So it's really, really a wonderful partnership that we have with our public library. Otter Adventures is another summer learning opportunity that is offered in our district. Otter Adventures, as you may remember, is a targeted services program. And touching base with Kristen Tool, who coordinates that service and works with the teachers and students. There was a total enrollment of 89 participants over the, over the four sessions during the summer. First session had 74 students, second session 76 students, third 79, and the fourth 70 students. So students who do participate in Otter Adventures aren't necessarily committed to signing up for all four sessions, but it's an opportunity that's there, and the families can indicate which weeks their child would be able to participate. So it's a great number of students participating, and there's certainly room for additional growth there as well. She noted here, too, Otter Adventures will begin after the MEA break this year and end in early May. So there'll be a little bit of a break here in September and October, but then start it up right away mid-October. And then extended school year is what is the service provided for our special education students who meet criteria for needing continuity in their programming. And the attendance with ESY was very positive, and there were five weeks across June, July, and August where those students received services. And then I, too, wanted to just note with regarding the Bridges math training last week, teachers were very, very pleased with the training that was provided. The trainer that provided instruction for 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders was, had been a 3rd grade teacher during her career and was just able to talk in real terms with teachers, and they were able to ask questions, yeah, but what about this and what about that? And they really walked away feeling that they're on the right track to being prepared for implementing the Bridges training. They're very excited to continue to explore on their new Promethean boards. They're all installed in the classrooms, and that training's forthcoming. But many of them have kind of grabbed an arm of one of our tech people and kind of gotten started on learning how to use those Promethean boards. So it'll be a great teaching tool in the classrooms. And I just want to share, Otter PTO is, we're always thankful for their activity during the school year. They've already met. They've reached out to Mr. Colbeck and me about some ideas and their planning. And what's really nice for them is knowing that fund balance in the spring of the year, so that they can, they know how much money they have to carry out with planning for the following school year. So they were, they got things going last spring, reaching out, so that we even have some activities planned for students right away this fall. And we'll be able to share about those once they're put in place. But last spring, the Booster Thong raised just over $37,000. And one of the activities that they're really working to bring into the community next spring is with Theater Works USA out of New York. And a couple of years ago, back in 2020, they brought the Magic School Bus performance to the Center for the Arts. And so this is that company, and they have several new shows that they're providing this spring. So they're working diligently to get that in place and have a wonderful theater, theatrical performance for our elementary students. I, too, would just like to say a big thank you to our custodial and grounds crew. They, they're known as to the grindstone during the summertime and do a thorough job of deep cleaning our classrooms, cleaning the carpets, shining up those hallways. They look fabulous right now. We can run around the buildings already. And sometimes they're really pushing the limit up to that week before teachers come. But we have full access to the Cleveland building. Cleveland's also having some cement work done outside, which really is going to add to the cleanliness and safety. The awning under the, the cement under the awning is being expanded to kind of alleviate some muddy areas, but also widen that area where we have students wait for their rides to pick them up after school each day, along with widening in the bus sidewalks to accommodate the sweeper in the wintertime. That, too, also is just going to add a nice, nice space for kids when they're getting on and off the bus. And then also, we're going to get rid of those muddy corners in the front sidewalk just by making that a little bit wider and curving the sidewalk. So we're excited about the improvements that are being made there. And then a big shout-out to our tech department. They have followed the electricians across the district with us Promethean board installation and are Johnny-on-the-spot when teachers are giving them a call to say, you know, could we extend this corridor or kind of configure in that teaching space? So our tech department certainly is accommodating, and they come up with some really good solutions when we come, when we follow our questions. And I'd like to just end with student enrollment up to date here. In our 3rd grade, we have 197 3rd graders enrolled, and that makes for about 24, 25 students per classroom. In our 4th grade, we have 173 students enrolled right now, and that makes for 21 or 22 students per classroom. So we have, as Mr. Colbeck mentioned, our enrollment numbers continue to fluctuate throughout these next few weeks, but that's all we're saying. And with that, I will, any questions?
Any questions for Principal Run?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Principal Hurst, middle school principal. Good morning.
Good morning. Probably one of my biggest learns last August was bring your current numbers of your grade level.
Yeah, we all read it.
Yeah, so everyone's got their rating utensils. Grade 5, 189, and there's seven sections there. Grade 6, 169. We have six sections in 6th grade. Grade 7, 221. Grade 8, 201. So total in the middle school is 780 students. So a lot of things been happening, a few changes that I'm going to explain with my report here today. The first one is Right Start. We had a Right Start for our 5th graders last Thursday. We had about 130 5th graders come in and get more comfortable with school routines, as well as expectations in the classroom, and then do the tour again. Last May, Mr. Stember and I gave tours to 4th graders as they came over. But as part of the Right Start program and transitioning, we do another day in August here, so that went well. The teachers that gave some of their time to plan and work this day were Angie Leach, Tia Tyzel, Becky Greenigle, and Mackenzie Laughlin. So thankful for their time, and it went really well. And then we also held parent meetings at the beginning of each session, give them some information. There were about 40% new. Their 5th grader was the oldest one in the family. So this is brand-new, and we don't really know what to expect. So good reminder for me of why we do that program, because there are, you know, 40 or so percent each time that this is the first run. So hopefully that was helpful, and I'm going to go down to open house next. We made a couple of changes with open house as well. In the past, in the past, we've done a 5th grade meeting at 4 o'clock, 6th grade at 5 o'clock, 7th grade at 6 o'clock. And what we found was, especially in the 5th and 6th grade classrooms, is parents would go right after the meeting. They would all go to the 5th grade classroom, and teachers would end up with 25 families right then and there. Well, that's not an open house. That's a drop off your things and get your locker and leave. So what we're doing now is we're going to do 5th and 6th grade parent meeting at 5:00 p.m. So, and then the teachers will encourage people to come before and after, so we can have more of an open house feel at open house. And then the 5th, 6th, or sorry, the 7th and 8th grade parent meeting will be at 6:30 for the same reason. So we want that open house feel, and like I said, the teachers will encourage people to come in before and after. So an easy change, but one that was asked for by the teachers, and I think will work well. What's the date on that? 31st, Wednesday the 31st. Probably the biggest change in the middle school is the, is the implementation of an advisory period in 7th and 8th grade. We're going to have two 25-minute periods each week where 7th and 8th graders go to an advisory teacher. In 7th grade, there are 14 groups, and in 8th grade, there are 12 groups. I'll let you do the math for those. So anyway, teachers have approximately 15, 16, 17, 18 kids, depending on the size of the group. Middle school staff identifying relationships is one of the most important things that we do. And this time is focused to do exactly that. They will get that, the advisory teacher will hopefully become a point of contact for not only parents, but for students in that relationship-building piece. So we took the 25 minutes out of the block time for 7th and 8th grade, worked with the fire departments and the music departments, and worked with them. And they were willing to give that time for that purpose, so I'm really thankful for that. You're like, well, what are you going to do in advisory? We're going to do two things in advisory. On Tuesdays, we're going to implement and pilot some SEL curriculums. In the first semester, we are implementing, or piloting, I should say, we're piloting seven mindsets, and we're going to have eight lessons in seven mindsets. And then the second part of the semester, quarter two, we're going to work with Be Good People, the SEL Be Good People. The two, or the four topics that we're going to work on are Anything is Possible and Attitude of Gratitude, and as well, and then Stress and Managing Feelings over the holiday season. So I think we have some really good topics, not too controversial topics. So I'm really happy about that. So on Tuesdays, 5, 6, 7, and 8, they will get a 25-minute SEL lesson on those topics. On Fridays, we will have, I've got a good list here. We will have team building, guided study hall, or class meetings, which we started last year. We did a 25-minute class meeting each month, probably starting in October, to touch base with students, recognize our MBOs, as well as give them a few reminders of some habits in each grade that we might like to change just a little bit. So Fridays will be those team meetings, team building. And so this is a big change for us, as we really hit the goal of relationships in our school. That's all I have this morning. Any questions?
I do, I have a question.
Yeah.
I heard Ms. Run talk about the PTO for the elementary grades, and I wondered, has any thought been given again to PTO for middle school? Because I've had parents inquire about it, and we used to have that. Just to increase parent involvement with our family.
There wouldn't be any barrier to creating a PTO, would there?
I don't think so. I don't really know why it was discontinued. Probably lack of interest, maybe.
That's what I guess.
Well, and maybe by bringing it, but if someone's got interest, that would be wonderful. Right, that would be good.
All right. Will you have those parents be in contact with Principal Run?
Yes.
If they want to?
Hurst.
Hurst.
Yes.
All right. If they want to institute something like that again, that'd be great. All right. No doo-doo. Principal Mark, Empresson High School, ALC, and A-12.
Good morning. I hope everybody's had a great summer. Feels like it just started and it's already ending. So I'll give you some numbers from the three schools. At Fergus Falls High School, we have 210 9th graders at this date, 195 10th graders, 171 11th graders, and 172 12th graders, which puts us at 745. We're up 5 from last Monday, so hopefully that number keeps going up. As you heard, the numbers from middle school, we're getting full fast. So ALC, so I'm going to give you some numbers and these numbers I'm giving you are now changed as of this morning because Kristen has been doing some phone calls with Amy to get kids back and re-enrolled. Currently, we have, we had zero ninth graders, twelve tenth graders, twenty-seven eleventh graders, and thirty twelfth graders, which led us to sixty-nine kids. As of this morning, Kristen has ninety-six kids enrolled at the ALC. They have made the personal phone calls to get kids back, re-enrolled. And that's the highest number of students we've ever had at Fergus Falls ALC, which is great and also concerning because we are not huge over there in space. So she's going to have larger class sizes this year and we're going to work hard to make sure we do right by them and find them the right opportunities. And one of those is allowing them to be in some of our elective courses, which will take some pressure off classes over there during times in core content. IQ Academy is at five hundred and twenty-two kids as of last Wednesday when I looked. Ryan said that they're averaging a lot of kids each day re-enrolling and our numbers are about right where we were at last year to start with. So I'm sure the sprint to get re-enrolled here in the next week or two, those numbers are going to go up the next time I come and present. So we have a lot of students in our buildings and a lot of students in our spaces and we're excited to see them this year. Open house for us is August thirty-first, ninth through twelfth grade. We'll be able to come in and get their schedules. The ninth graders will meet for thirty minutes in the auditorium. And then they will leave with sixteen leaders in our building for tenth through twelfth grade students, then take them to eight different classrooms to build relationships with their parents and the students to know that we want you back in this building a lot this year. So one of the transitions for the ninth grade is to make sure we connect with our parents over not just this year, but keep that relationship going for the next four years. So small steps to a big possibility for us moving forward. Our leadership team here at the high school in ALC met August second, actually in here for six hours. Knowing that the conversation on the five-by-three was going to be coming to you in September, we wanted to make sure we had all our things and ducks in a row. We did meet with parents, so we collected that information over the last two weeks. We'll meet with leadership and then we'll come and present to you some of the things we talked about, our attendance and that there's sometimes the lack of. Student-staff relationships, which our student surveys showed us our kids want to have relationships with our staff. Our staff is wanting those same relationships with our students. So finding those opportunities within the school day and making sure in that transition to a five-by-three, that's an absolute must. Couple other things we talked about, we are in preparation of auditor time, which is time during the day to retake and retest. And with our curriculum guaranteeing content, we are going to give a practice run there this year. Students are going to be able to retake a test. They have to go through a process, fill out a form, do all their work, be allowed to do it. But the expectation is that they'll do their work and they'll actually, in the process, develop those study skills and do it right the first time and not have to retake it as we move forward. The staff was worried if we didn't do a test run, we'd jump into a five-by-three where we do it and we'd make some mistakes and have to fix it, so we'll fix it this year. The activity started, kids are back in the building. As you see, there's big caution tapes all over the KSS. Maintenance has done an amazing job cleaning here this summer. They're finishing up where the ALC had summer school and the kids are down in the other end of the building. I'm having a blast. Our math curriculum, did purchase their curriculum and we'll be using that to write their standards for the next coming year because their math standards are in. They are looking forward to that content. We have talked about our first week of school. We will not have homework except for college classes again. We'll do some table-tent relationship activities for the first day. We've planned that for our staff with support from other staff and making sure that some of the things we're putting in place are very clear and that we're all on board. Our PLC is working on aligning their curriculum in scope and sequence, which is a must, especially if we move to a five-by-three. One of the big ones, we've heard positive things from parents on this. Shane and I were worried about this in our parent meetings. Our cell phone, we thought we'd get some pushback from that. Parents are extremely excited about it. Our teachers all have their boxes, they'll all be handed out and signs will go on doors. So we're all in, everybody knows what the rules are when you're in class and you have to leave. Cell phones are in a box and they stay there till the end of the hour. So haven't had a lot of concerns from parents, they're more excited than anything else.
Yes, we are.
One parent made the comment, well, what if I need to get hold of my son? And I'm like, you can text them during passing and lunch and they're good. My son, every time I send him a message, he thinks I need him to call me right away. He doesn't, so we'll work on that piece. We did get new cameras in the building this year, which are awesome. They're amazing looking at. They also have vape detectors in the bathroom. We know for a fact they work, so we'll be working on that piece. They were in during summer school and they had a couple of conversations. So there is some things that happen, it's not just vape and such. If you have a loud noise and such in there, they do go off. So if there's an altercation in the bathrooms, we would also know that. We get emails, so Kristen's had a couple of conversations with some of her summer school students, so we know the vape detectors do work. Just didn't get those pieces from them because they hate them very well. Moving on to the ALC, Kristen and her staff had an amazing summer. We had eighty-six kids come in for a total of a hundred and thirty-five chances at credits. Ninety-seven credits were earned, which means seventy-three percent of our kids who came earned the credits that they wanted to, which is absolutely amazing, puts many of our kids back on track. We had kids from our own district, Battle Lake and Ashby here. The hallways were busy with different kids on different days because they had different schedules. It was awesome to see. The fast track, we had our at-risk incoming ninth graders come in. We had thirteen students, they came for every day, they earned their two credits. And they spent a lot of time working on relationships and what it meant to be a ninth grade student at the high school and the importance of keeping their credits and not losing them in their first year. I told you about the current ALC students. We do have seven freshmen now that are enrolled at the ALC. They struggled in the past, we felt that the smaller setting, an opportunity for them to get their feet on the ground and do well with the hopes that they can start integrating with us here at the high school and possibly move back if they so desire, which we know once they go over to the ALC, they tend not to want to come back to us full-time, which is okay. Kristen wrote a grant for thirty-two thousand dollars this summer and it was absolutely fantastic. It's the orientation boot camp. So tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, the staff over there who spent the last week prepping for this will have thirty-four opportunities for kids to come in that are new over there. Twenty-five of them have signed up. So they have navigators, they've picked seven kids who they feel are the real leaders at the ALC. They've been trained and they're going to get two credits, one each semester for being a leader at the ALC and going through the preparation of being a trainer and a mentor to the kids at the ALC. What does it mean to be an ALC student? So those twenty-five kids who were new who chose to come, all seven of those mentors are going to be there this week. The mentors have to be there two out of three days. Some are athletes, they have to miss practice to come and participate in this, but it was a big deal for them. The relationships and the expectations of what to do, who do you go to? Who do you trust at the ALC is all part of the conversations and developing that trust with the mentors through some activities and with their teachers over there, because they're there also. And they're being paid through that grant for last week's work and this week's work also. The bathrooms, I'm guessing you're going to talk about them, I'll leave that off. And then IQ, they meet tomorrow and Wednesday for their in-service here and they'll be at KSS. Ryan will be working with scope and sequence like we will here at the high school. He will also have PBL training going on and they're going to have Dr. Elliott there and she'll work individually in departments and small groups to make sure they implement their PBLs with the online curriculum they have, which might be a little bit different than how we would do it in the building with students face-to-face. Brian has some IQ handbook things he's updated. The big one is the enrollment date. It's fast and firm, we won't take any more enrollments after third quarter and move forward from that piece. And I said before, as the days go on, each day we get new kids at the IQ and they actually are coming faster there than they are here in our building. So we look forward to seeing upwards of eight hundred plus kids again at IQ as we get going through the school year. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You can definitely feel the energy start to rise and quicken with the start of another school year. I'm really excited about it. I think our staff and administration's really excited about it. Many thank yous to give, some of them will be a little repetitive, but I want to especially point out the work of our custodians, our grounds, and our mechanical folks this summer. They've done an amazing job getting our buildings ready to go. And I want to in particular just say a special thank you to Doug Anderson. With the supply chain issues that we've had, the difficulty working with contractors that have had very full schedules and some other bumps along the way, he's really done a tremendous job working with multiple entities to try to get our projects rolling and done on time. And I'll talk a little bit more about where those are at here in a couple of minutes. Our tech department with the installation of the Promethean boards and their support with software, training such as with those Promethean boards with their teachers. All of those pieces are incredibly important. Getting the new educational benefits forms ready to go for parents, and I'll talk a little bit about those in a minute as well, but much appreciation is due to those folks as well. District office has been hopping, they've been hopping now for a couple of years with a lot of turnover with staff, helping to support the needs of the buildings when we have absences and trying to cover all the classrooms. It's been a very, very busy summer and that's probably not going to let up. We are near the last round of negotiations for new contracts, so we're looking forward to getting a new two-year agreement with our special ed pairs and moving forward with that. But the cycle just keeps rolling on. So we also have some wonderful partners, Otter Tail Coaches here this morning, but our appreciation to them. The Five Forty-four Foundation will once again be providing a lunch for us on our September first in-service, district-wide in-service day. So very appreciative of all the support that we get from our community as well and supporting agencies and businesses. The back-to-school open house, that's been touched on by each of the principals, so I won't go into detail other than to say we hope that our buildings are absolutely teeming with parents and students. And it's a great opportunity for us to kick off the new year with building those relationships. This is the application for free and reduced lunch. This form was included in the back-to-school newsletter. Most people choose to fill it out online, but we will also have paper pencil versions of it in each of the offices for our open house to make sure that we continue to put that out in front of parents. For our listeners, this is very, very important. Just remember that the free lunches, breakfast that had been going on during the pandemic, that is no longer taking place unless you complete and qualify for the educational benefits. And we've seen a pretty significant drop in some of our revenue, particularly Title I, because when the free meals were in place, people were not filling out the applications. This was very common throughout Minnesota, but we need to get that process back and going again. It's really important for us, not only on the nutrition side for our students, but also on the support side, bringing in revenue that we use to support students reading and math education. I mentioned earlier, we have had a very, very busy summer with facility work. The ALC bathroom, Doug and I just had a conference call with Garrett from Comstock last, it's either Thursday or Friday morning. We will have working bathrooms by the first day of school. There will be a little bit of work to do following that. The partitions that we need for this job won't likely arrive until about mid-September, but we're going to install some older ones that are available in the meantime. So we will have functioning and expanded bathrooms at the ALC, which has been needed now for several years and especially as Mr. Anderson mentioned, starting the school year with about ninety-six kids, there definitely are due. So we're very, very excited that that project is finally going to be complete and ready to go. The Roosevelt Kitchen, that commercial kitchen, that won't likely kick off here for another week or so, kind of late August, early September. This is a nice kind of accessory space for both our ALC and our community ed programs. And it's new space for them, but if it's not ready until mid to late September, I don't really see that as being something we can't work around, but that is on the docket as well. We should have Comstock over at the Roosevelt Gym today. We had a long process working with our insurance company on the damage that was caused by the ice and snow last year. But that should be really kicking off full steam ahead as of today, those canopies. And then we'll have the ice mitigation system installed on that Roosevelt Gym roof as well. As far as Lincoln School, we are continuing to work with the state on a financing plan to finish the second half of that facility. And then the last one I want to touch base on with this report is the Chiller Project. We have worked with both the city, the Fergus Falls Hockey Association, and the Fergus Falls Figure Skating Association. Our last day of fall cooling, air conditioning will be Friday, September twenty-third. The transfer of ownership of the Chiller, the Anhydrous ammonia chiller from the school district to the city is scheduled to take place on Monday, September twenty-sixth, which will coincide with the separation of that unit from our school, draining of the glycol. The parent surveys, this is maybe a little bit small for people to see, but we had, I think about three hundred and eighty people fill out the, or participate in the Safe Return to Schools survey. You can see that the mitigation efforts or strategies that the school employs are largely supported by the vast, vast majority of our families and staff. That includes increased airflow, increased sanitizing efforts and cleaning efforts. So those types of things, personal protective measures being a matter of personal choice. The one that was maybe had a little bit more variety in terms of response was do you want the school district to maintain a supply of COVID-nineteen testing kits? And that one would see, you know, about sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent of families that would disagree with that. But by and large, the plan that has been put forward, that is a federal requirement, has been very well received by the public. We mentioned Otter Tail Coaches and our partnership with them. This is a stock photo, but that electric bus that we rode on this morning, and I had the luxury of driving for a little tour around the parking lot, that is one of only three in the state of Minnesota of this model. There are eight total electric buses in the state. So congratulations to Otter Tail Coaches, that was part of a grant. And exciting for us, I believe Mike mentioned that that has a range of about a hundred and forty miles a day. It will be used primarily for routes around the community here. It will not have the range to do co-curricular type routes for sports and stuff, but it'll be really interesting, quiet as a mouse. And as he said, it's got a good hole shot, so that thing's got good torque with it. It takes off when you push the gas down, so it'll be a fun unit to drive and a green piece for our environment and excited about that as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you might have.
Can we go back to the open house slide a little bit? The open house for Lincoln is Thursday, September first, I believe.
Yes, that one is, yes, it is. Thanks for bringing that up, Kirby. Anything else?
Did you talk about the basketball court? I missed that. Is that that hole?
The Roosevelt one or the piece up here?
Yeah.
Yes, so that is the back court clubs project. That got a later start probably than anticipated due to the wet soil conditions. What I've been told, but I need to touch base with Ryan Nelson for an update. They dug the hole out, that's going to have to be filled back in and compacted because they need a solid base given how wet that general area is. And then they will pour the court. There will be, I don't, I think there might be turf put down. They've talked about turf or hydroseed, but that will have to be probably fenced off, at least for the start of the school year to keep kids out of that area while. at least for the start of the school year to keep kids out of that area while things start to take root, et cetera.
And I've been getting a lot of questions about the giant hole over here. Could you just, for the public, just explain?
Yes, absolutely. So the big hole on the top of the hill is for the, our new air conditioning chiller. And so that pad, that concrete pad where that will sit on will eventually be poured here in the coming weeks. But that's all part of that project. And because of supply side or supply chain issues, we won't get the switchgear likely and the other electrical components until May first roughly. So with that, Mike Richards will need a couple of weeks to finish up tying off the electric part of it. We're, fingers crossed, have air conditioning back in this building around mid-May. Anything else? All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Drake. Our next agenda item is the general consent agenda, which includes our minutes from the last board meeting. And then to the line Jenke for a bit of personnel activity.
Good morning, everyone. I'll quickly go through these. I have more details actually on the agenda and obviously they'll be published in the minutes also. So we'll just kind of quickly go through these. Support staff resignations and food service, we have Michael Whitehead, Joy Brown and Cheryl Anderson. Stephanie Lundie, student support aide over at Cleveland. And then two special ed pairs, Ursula Nansen and Brenda Harrington. Brenda Harrington will be in, under the new business as a request to hire additional HR payroll specialist help at twenty-five hours a week. Support staff hires, Brooke McCon, long-term substitute school nurse. She will start the school year off until Jen returns yet, following M E A break. Kayla Hansi, period educator at Adams School. Under food service, we have Linda Jensen and Jennifer Friends. And then special ed pairs, we have five new hires, Cassandra Tweet, excuse me, at Adams, along with Robin Hopper, Angela Gladback, Janelle Seedorf and Dennis Kinzer here at Kennedy Secondary School. And then also Jody Kidder, student service coordinator here at Kennedy, Kennedy Secondary School. Certified staff hires, Gabrielle Frederickson. She's going to be an elementary teacher, long-term sub over at Adams School. Ian Goose, elementary teacher in our fifth grade here at Kennedy Secondary School. Deborah Kloster, reading intervention here at middle school. And Jacqueline S. Ledwood, art fax teacher, just an increase in her current contract. She was a point six-six-seven and she'll increase one class first and second, second semester. So she'll have a total of a point eight-three-three FTE. Support staff resignation, Stephanie Fleming, language arts teacher. And then individual contract, secondary school nurse, which is Lori Jensen. Her contract was up for renewal, so I would request approval on those personnel items on the board.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on these? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we will move on to our new business. Seek the approval for CAC-FP contract for rented meals between the West Central Minnesota Community's Action, hence, which is Head Start, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools, effective on October first of last year, but to continue through October twenty-two-three. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, next seeking a motion for joint agreement between the school district and the Level Four program. And would someone make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Looking for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Fergus Falls School District goals.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have the Huddle Sports Activity Subscription, looking for a motion to endorse renewing that. That's the, that's the video that allows live streaming. Someone make that motion.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All right, but Natalie on that, any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Just out of curiosity with that, that's, we're, we're running, our staff is running the video for that. We're not like hiring someone to film or, you know.
Any other comments on that? Moving on to the Safe Return to School In-Person Learning Plan. The superintendent just covered the information about that with the questionnaire to the parents. So would someone endorse a motion to accept that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? We still must have this per oversight regulations, so. All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have Driver's Education Certification and Tuition Reimbursement Plan. That has been proposed, would someone make a motion to endorse that?
Moved.
All right, Natalie, and is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. The Parent-Student Handbook for IQ Academy has been presented, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have before us a request to hire Brenda Harrington for twenty-five hours a week to assist that HR payroll. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. And we have a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. This is a long resolution, which will be in the minutes on the website in its entirety. And to save us half of our life, I'm going to read the highlighted part that is descriptive of what the resolution entails. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Five Forty-four, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, it's necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each. The clerk shall include on the ballot the names of individuals who file or have filed affidavits of candidacy during the period of forced filing such affidavits as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by the law. Number two, the general election is hereby called and elected to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Number three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section Two-O-Five-A, Point One-One, the precincts and polling places for this general election are those polling places and precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as for the state general election. The resolution continues and just generally says, we had openings, people filed, we're going to vote on it, I agree. Would someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Or offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I think the filing period was August second through the sixteenth.
Correct.
I have a question, maybe a few more. The city said that they had their filing created, but new candidates had to file by the sixteenth. But the existing council members had two more days, do we have something?
No, you have two days to withdraw, following. Yes, so there's always two days to withdraw after the closing of it on Tuesday. So they had until Thursday to withdraw. I think maybe that was the case?
I'm not sure the general reported that accurately, but I'll have to check on that.
Okay, but that is the general protocol we've always followed.
Because I'm sure, pretty sure that they said that they had two extra days to decide.
Well, I guess in a sense they did because they can pull their name, maybe, I don't know, but they can't add their name when it closes, it closes on my, that's my understanding. Yeah, no, you're welcome.
All right, any other discussion or comments on the resolution? Hearing none? Can you do a quick? Melanie Cole? Yes. Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasov?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a resolution on health and safety measures for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Again, relevant to the pandemic and follow-up that's required for that. And I will read a shortened version of this resolution as well, which is included in its entirety on the minutes, which will be on the public website. Whereas Minnesota Statute One-Two-Three-B, Point Oh-Nine, vests the care management and control of independent school districts in the school board and whereas the superintendent of Independent School District Number Five Forty-four is responsible for the management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies and is directly accountable to the school board. And Section One, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement different health and safety measures for the school district or any specific school buildings without the school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of different health and safety measures is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. So there, we have it. If it gets bad, the superintendent can act quickly. Would someone offer this resolution about health and safety measures?
I'll offer that resolution.
And is there a second? Thank you. A second to the resolution?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasov?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson? Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole? Yes. The resolution is adopted. All right. We're on the resolution roll this morning and we are going to consider this resolution, providing for a public hearing to consider granting a proposed property tax abatement. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Five Forty-four, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, the school board hereby finds and determines that a public hearing shall be held pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Statutes, Section Four-Six-Nine, Point One-Eight-One-Three, Subdivision Five, to consider granting an abatement of certain property taxes levied against the net capacity taxed imposed by Independent School District Number Five Forty-four, the proposed property tax abatement for taxes payable in twenty-three, twenty-twenty, I'll just say that again, for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-three through two thousand thirty-two on the following properties within the school district boundaries. And these are identified by property identification numbers and are listed in the minutes. So I won't jumble up all those numbers because there's a lot of zeros. Number two, the purpose of granting the proposed property tax abatement is to provide funds to finance the construction of and improvements to parking lots at various sites in the district. Total estimated cost of the proposed property tax abatement by the school district is one million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars over ten years, an amount estimated to be sufficient to pay the principal and interest charges on approximately one million six hundred dollars in bonds issued to finance parking lot construction, reconstruction and improvements district-wide and related financing costs. Number three, the public hearing to consider granting the proposed tax abatement shall be held at five fifteen on September twelfth in the Outer Community Room here at Kennedy Secondary School, Six-O-One Randolph Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Number four, all who wish to be heard as to the proposed property tax abatement will be given an opportunity to express their views at the time of the public hearing or may file written comments with the superintendent prior to the hearing. There is an attached notice, which is Exhibit A, and that is the summary of that resolution. There is a fuller narrative that will be included in the minutes. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Oh, offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all, I'll turn it to a clerk. Okay, Steven Vigasov?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. That concludes this morning's regular agenda for the meeting. We'll have a work session to follow and we will switch back to late afternoon meetings on September twelfth, five fifteen, which coincides with when we're going to have that public meeting on parking lot financing, in case anyone missed that. All right, so with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned this morning, thank you.